Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January 12th, 2016 School Board Meeting of Seminole County, Florida. Before we start with a heavy heart, I thought it would be appropriate to share that we lost a good friend of ours here in Seminole County Public Schools, a past board member, Ms. Jeannie Morris, on December 26th. She died after a long struggle with cancer. She was born Mary Jean Nelson in Baltimore, Maryland. She spent her early childhood in Indiana and always regarded herself as a Hoosier, even after moving to Central Florida in the 1950s where she attended Bishopmore High School. She was a graduate of University of Florida. Jean devoted her life to helping others through charitable works with the organizations ranging from the Girl Scouts to the American Cancer Society. For her service, Jean was recognized with the Jefferson Award for Public Service. Her main work was with the Seminole County Public Schools where she started out as a PTA Officer and school volunteer and rose to serve on the school board for 20 years. In 2001, the Florida School Board Association awarded her the Pat Spangler Award for her passion for improving education for all children. She is survived by her children, Michael and Malia, her sisters Leann, who helped care for Jeannie in her last days in Maryland, and is deeply grieved by her former husband, Max. The family does request that contributions be made to the Jeannie Morris Scholarship, which is established at the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools. When I spoke with some staff members about what they remembered about Jeannie most fond, it really touched my heart because it's the same Jeannie we've all known for the decades that we were lucky enough to call her a friend. She advocated always for every single child, and during the consent decree work, she held firm to her commitment to ensure excellence and equity throughout the district for every single child, no matter where they came from. And in the bio, I mentioned the Girl Scouts of America. She was very passionate about helping that organization as well, and one of our staff members was actually the countywide Girl Scout Cookie Chairperson. And when Jeannie showed up to her house to collect the cookies for her troop, there was a garage filled with cookies, and person didn't know what to do with them. And Jeannie, being in the normal Jeannie fashion, she rolled up her sleeves and spent the day organizing it for the entire county to help any child who had any need in any way in our community. So, at this point in time, I'd ask you all to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you so very much. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Schaffner to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
I feel the necessity to apologize for my appearance tonight. My dermatologist is making me his poster child. Just want you to know that. We are going to be celebrating Monday, the Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which is officially the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr. It's an American federal holiday marking the birthday of this famous man. It's observed on the third Monday of January each year, which is around his birthday, which is actually January 15th. The holiday is similar to holidays set under the Uniform Monday Holiday Act. King was the chief spokesman for nonviolent activism in the Civil Rights Movement, which successfully protested racial discrimination in federal and state law. The campaign for a federal holiday in King's honor soon began after his assassination in 1968. President Ronald Reagan signed the holiday into law in 1983, and it was first observed three years later. The idea of a Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a holiday was promoted by labor unions and contract negotiations. After King's death, US Representative John Conyers, a Democrat from Michigan, and US Senator Edward Brooks, a Republican from Massachusetts, introduced a bill in Congress to make King's birthday a national holiday. The bill first came to a vote in the US House of Representatives in 1979. However, it fell five votes short of the number needed for passage. Two of the main arguments mentioned by opponents were that a paid holiday for federal employees would be too expensive, and that a holiday to honor a private citizen would be contrary to longstanding tradition. King had never held public office. Only two other figures have national holidays in the US honoring them, George Washington and Christopher Columbus. Soon after, the King Center turned to support from the corporate community and the general public. The success of this strategy was cemented when musician Stevie Wonder released the single record Happy Birthday to popularize the campaign in 1980 and hosted the Rally for Peace Press Conference in 1981. Six million signatures were collected for a petition to Congress to pass the law, termed by the 2006 article in The Nation as "the largest petition in favor of an issue in US history." It was officially observed, this day was officially observed, in all 50 states for the first time in the year 2000. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Schaffner. At this point in time, I'd like to acknowledge some folks we have in the audience. We have Mr. Jed Downs representing the Business Advisory Board. Thank you for being here. We have Seminole County Council PTA representatives. Thank you for being here and for your service. And Mr. Christopher Link, a student at Lyman High School who is working on his last merit badge before Eagle Scout. Congratulations and good luck to you, Christopher. Let the record reflect that all five school board members are in attendance. Mr. Bauer is in attendance telephonically. Additionally, we have our school board attorney and superintendent. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, we have three, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. Also have two items we're going to be pulling. The first is item 4D, which is Policy 4.60, Field Trips. Going to make some modifications after our discussion, at our open discussion earlier today. And also, on the addendum, I'm going to be pulling item 4U, which is page 167, but only five items within that item. Item 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
Board members, do you have any items for removal or clarifying questions? Member Schaffner?
Yes, just for comment, 4N is in Nancy, and 4O is in oxygen.
Thank you. Member Bauer, do you have any questions?
No ma'am.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
None, thank you.
Member Almond?
None, thank you.
And I have committee assignments for 4G, H, I, J, and K. Seeing no further questions, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda outline?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Dr. Griffin, do we have any?
Question? What was the second one that Dr. Griffin pulled?
4U.
4U, number? 4U, the bottom of page 167, and it's number 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. It's the bottom of the page.
Okay.
We had the vote, so Dr. Griffin, do you have any presentations?
Yes, we do. Down front, I think we have one introduction.
Okay.
Board members, Dr. Griffin, with your approval of the agenda tonight, Ms. Stephanie Stewart is the new Staff Counsel with the Legal Services Department. Ms. Stewart graduated from Southern Methodist University with degrees in psychology and
Yeah. I just wanted to say I was very, very pleased to see that we have schools that are going
advertising.
to be attending this special seminar that's put on by Harvard, because I know it's regarding,
She then went on to Mercer University's College of Law and graduated in 2005.
let me get back to my page here.
Most recently, she was with the Guardian at Latham Director, she was the Guardian at Latham Director for the Legal Aid Society of the Orange County Bar Association, where
Yeah, hold on just a minute, look at my page.
she managed the litigation and litigation attorneys for the association.
Not that I didn't know you were going to ask me this, but it's for turnaround schools.
With her tonight is her husband Cecil, and her three children, Colin, Sabina, and Caleb.
There it is. It's the Harvard Graduate School for Education, and they do this Seminole, they're going to do at Seminole County, we have a Seminole County Turnaround Institute, and this is an opportunity for so many of our school teams to attend this training. It's put on by Harvard, but it's going to be in Orange County. So, we can afford to send more people, and it's a great opportunity for our, and I just wanted to make that comment, I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
And Board Member Schaffner and Board, the program will host 50 staff members, majority being teachers and administrators from select schools that are in the process of working on school turnaround and transformation specifically. And so, this was a program that I had an opportunity to attend in summer of 2015. It's a great program, research-based, so lots of information that will come out of professors that work with school turnaround out of Harvard University. So, I think the team that we're taking will bring lots of great information to work with their school-based teams as we work to improve our focus schools.
It's just such a golden opportunity with it being in Orange County. We have the opportunity to send more than if we had to hike them up to Massachusetts.
It's the first time I think they've come to Orange County. Generally, you have to attend their university out of state, which is even more costly. So, I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Thank you.
And you had a comment on 4O?
4O as well, yes. This is the reuse that we're going to use of our prototype design for the new Millennium Middle School, and again, and the new Intermediate Learning Center. Again, reusing plans is saving us a lot of money. So, I really support us doing these prototypes, and I know we've done the prototype elementary, middle, and high school over the years, and this is a great way to reuse plan and save money. We're all for that.
Exactly, thank you. I'd like to appoint some board members on some committees. On 4G, I will serve on that committee. 4H, Member Schaffner, if you could please serve on that committee. And 4I, J, and K, Member Lockhart, if you could represent the board on those committees.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, we have focused on student achievement this evening.
Yes, we do. Dr. Weisong, Dr. Cody, come on down, team. CS 2020.
Dr. Griffin, Dr. Calderon, Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening about the recommendations for moving forward with what we have branded as Computer Science 2020, which will represent Seminole County's efforts to ensure that all of our students have access to computer science instruction pre-K through 12. Dr. Griffin charged a task force this past fall with having conversation about the increasing importance of computer science and putting together a plan which would allow us to move forward. We were able to get the kindergarten piece in place for the 15, 16 school year, and that has gone very well. You've been out in schools seeing the results of that effort. Dr. Cody and I were out at Woodlands Elementary this morning and saw excellent instruction going on there in a kindergarten classroom, students working with B-bots and their mats. So, this really moves the initiative forward. Just a couple of opening comments, and then I've got a great team with me tonight to walk you through the major pillars of the plan. First of all, you'll see that the E-Pathways logo is on the title slide, but I want to emphasize that this initiative really is a multi-departmental effort at the district office in partnership with all of the schools. This is a pretty significant undertaking, and so there'll be a lot of personnel involved. And although we'll use E-Pathways as our branding for this initiative, really, this has been from the beginning, a partnership between Teaching and Learning, Information Services, and E-Pathways, and really a great example of what we can accomplish as a district when our departments are on the same page and our folks are working together. And then I can't stress enough the great work that's being done by our principals and assistant principals to explain this initiative out in the schools and to prepare our faculty, staff, parents, and students for the work that's ahead. So, we're really excited about the partnership element of the initiative. The other piece is that the plan that we are sharing tonight was very much built from the ground up by the task force, and we'll tell you a little bit about that group, but several of them are here this evening. So, I'd like to take the opportunity to ask those folks to stand and be recognized for their services as part of this group. We really had great help from our principals, assistant principals, and teachers at each level, couple of business partners, a parent representing Seminole County PTA, and then finally, we did have a student voice on the committee. So, I just want to, I know that you all always appreciate when we have the opportunity to get student input, and so Isaac Glennor from Croom's Academy joined us on the task force, and Isaac is also here this evening and really helped ground our thinking in the student perspective. So grateful for his effort. This really was a great task force. We met only four times, a lot of homework between meetings, but wrapped up our deliverables on time. So, it was a really exciting group to be a part of. And so, without further delay, we'll walk you through the plan.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and Board Members. As Dr. Weisong was saying, the committee came together, and really, the need had been established and put in front of us by Dr. Griffin to discuss what is needed by students in the world that we're preparing them for, because obviously, our students in classrooms today, we're preparing them for what their future's going to be, not the one we currently live in. And coding is becoming all more important as a language, as a way in which to problem solve, and building the skill sets necessary to make our students competitive for tomorrow's global economy. And at the same time, understanding that it can be a great equalizer, and how important it is to this board and this district that we have that equity and access for all of our students, and provide all of our students opportunity to experience these important skill sets as they move through, was also a priority needed this group as we got together to start these conversations. So, that led to the vision, and Dr. Griffin helped share with us that, as I said with the equity piece, we want all students to have some equal opportunity and access to experience these skills on the front end, so that they have that opportunity to explore those interests, gain the knowledge, and be prepared. So, the plan in front of you tonight, you will see pre-K through 8 experiences that will be for all students in pre-K through 8 by 2020, that sequence them through various different aspects of the coding curriculum as we move forward. Then, the idea was that in high school, we have robust, almost E-pathways, but different pathways that students can choose from, so that if they are wanting to truly be a programmer and go that route, they'll have those opportunities. They will have the opportunity for AP courses. They'll have the opportunity to go and just dabble a little bit if they want to, to get some continual exposure throughout, but that those various pathways will all exist. And finally, we know how important it is to make sure that we connect what the students are learning to real-world application, solve real-world problems, and help them make those connections. And at the same time, we only have a certain amount of time in the day, so you'll see that a lot of what we're going to be talking about doing moving forward, much as you saw with kindergarten, involve the fact that we took kindergarten standards, and we just changed the content and related it to different aspects. So, it wasn't, it's not always about, we're very sensitive about, we don't add on top. It's about going and changing the way in which we can look at and do some things sometimes. And so, that's also been a part of the vision. You're all aware of this, you've been to walk through the skills model before, the E-Pathway skills for future-ready graduates, and these will be interwoven into these experiences we're talking about, as well as in that collaboration with the Department of Teaching and Learning, the instructional plans throughout the various content areas will be interworking these skills as we move forward. Dr. Weisong mentioned the task force, and there were 30 members and a nice cross-representation of school-based personnel, including a student, district-based personnel from all three departments between E-Pathways, Teaching and Learning, and Information Services, and business representatives from industry who understand what they're looking for in employees and what those skill sets are necessary. I can't say enough positive words about the work of the task force and what a great group it was, because as Dr. Weisong mentioned, we basically, we only met four times face-to-face, and it was because we had homework in between, there were conversations, and those two hours at each of those meetings was probably some of the quickest two hours I've ever been a part of. The group was always highly engaged, very robust, and met the deliverable of bringing this plan forward to you within those meetings. And at this time, I'll transition it to Ryan Peats.
Good evening. So, one of the things that Dr. Weisong had started with is, we are underway with kindergarten coding. This year, we also did implement a program, two programs, in the middle schools, I Journey, I Connect, and we have had some programs going on at the high school, but we didn't have anything in a lot of the other grades. So, besides coming up with those plans, we also wanted to develop a set of essential skills, and that's the slide that you're looking at right now. And you can just see a few of those aren't specific or isolated to coding. Persistence is going to be a skill that the students are going to need in all aspects of their life, ELA, math, science, social studies, programming, sequencing, systems thinking. So, we wanted to come up with a set of essential skills with this plan that will be interwoven throughout the K through 12, or pre-K through 12 curriculum for CS 2020. Along with that, we came up with key concepts as a committee. I know many of you have been in the kindergarten classrooms and have heard the little kindergarten kids talking about algorithm. So, that is one, that is the one at the beginning there. But we wanted to come up with several others that they'll be able to hit and focus on throughout the entire CS 2020 curriculum as well. So, without further ado, we can jump right into the elementary portion of it, and Linda will take that part for you.
Good evening. So, as you heard Dr. Wilson, he discussed kindergarten is already underway. We have a great implementation. That curriculum is scripted. In first and second, it will look similar to that. There will also be a culminating project. As a matter of fact, we'll probably revise kindergarten to include a culminating project in the coming year. In third, fourth, and fifth, it will be more self-directed, more project-based, and in fifth grade, that will be a transition to the middle school curriculum with the I-Series, I-Series courses. So, with the elementary timeline, in orange, you'll see Model A. Model A is the full curriculum. We will start to develop that full curriculum for first grade this year for implementation in 16, 17. Every year, we'll add on an additional grade level, so that you can see that kindergarten that has implementation this year will receive first grade full implementation and so on. When you look to Model B, that's more of a fast-paced concentrated curriculum. It's our catch-up model, so we will be developing that for third grade, and you'll see that no grade level will, it will not be any more than two years before a grade level receives coding or computer science instruction. So, without further ado, I think we'll go to middle school with Nicolina Wilson.
Thank you, Linda. So, our task force for the middle school model was very, wanted to build upon the already existing initiatives that we've implemented, both in the previous school year and in this school year. So, instead of introducing, like they said, "on top of," we're also going to add this, we're going to put this into already existing initiatives. The first initiative is the I-Series courses. We want to adapt and enhance the already implemented two I-Series courses, I Journeys and I Connect, to include computer science and programming standards such as concepts in HTML, web design, and other coding and programming. So, we're going to enhance those two courses, and as you'll see on the next slide, over the next seven months to a year, and continually revise them to, as the kids get more skilled in these concepts, introduce them to more rigorous concepts in these courses. We're also proposing to add a third I-Series course as a working title, I Challenge. And this is a more project-based learning course that is tied to the Digital Tool Certificate Programming and Logic, which we have piloted at one school this year, and so all three of these courses will be tied to Digital Tools Certificates. The third thing what we want to do for middle school is enhance the already going-on robotics initiatives. So, use the robotics equipment and the science curriculum and science standards to add computer programming to reach all the kids in middle school across the board through the science curriculum. And then here is the timeline for it. Like I said, already going through and revising and refining based on student feedback, teacher feedback, and introducing these coding and programming skills and concepts that Ryan mentioned earlier into our I-Journey and I-Connect courses, building and launching a new I-Series course, and increasing the enrichment opportunities as well as the science curriculum in middle school. And this is Dr. Harper with high school.
I don't think your mic is on.
Sorry. Now the green light's on. So, as you can see in front of you with the high school model, as was mentioned by Dr. Weisong at the beginning, this really is kind of twofold. It's first about adding options, and then the arrows show you the pathways, and as Dr. Wilson mentioned, you know, sort of along the lines of E-Pathways, but you can see that students in a four-year high school program would have multiple pathways, again, as indicated by the arrows. So, for example, they may decide to take AP Computer Science Principles in their ninth grade year, or year one, wherever they onboard in our high school system, and from there, they may decide to go to AP Computer Science A, or they may drop into an electives course, or some students, if they have the availability in their schedule, may decide to take multiple computer science courses that we offer. I think one of the exciting, among many of the other exciting things that are happening with this, if you look down at the bottom, the cybersecurity program that will be implemented at one of our high schools, and as you've heard over the past several months, that is the fastest-growing area in technology right now, and a lot of jobs are out there, a lot of students are interested in this, and we've actually had some success in prior years with cybersecurity competitions within the district. Then we can move over to the high school timeline without reading this to you, as with the elementary and middle schools. It is a process that methodically will be building and rolling out, implementing, and reevaluating. So, we're hoping that by 2016, 17, which is just a few months away, you will see, which if I'm not mistaken, we are there already, where all of our high schools will have the Computer Science A, AP Computer Science A at all high schools. But the goal, and who knows, we may exceed that goal, in the first year is to have the AP Computer Science Principles, which by the way, is a new course being implemented by College Board. Along with that, will be the first level for the cybersecurity program, and then also building as a team, as Dr. Weisong and Wilson had mentioned, as a team, as a district, building the digital information technology program for high school students, and also that'll start going down into middle school. I think one of the outcomes that you're going to see with this, as was mentioned, but just to wrap this up, is from the high school perspective, it is interdisciplinary. If you go back to what Mr. Peats said, and you think about all the skills, and how you probably could take any one of those skills and push those into a social studies course, and a language arts, math, logically, science, those can go into many different directions. So, it is truly interdisciplinary by nature, and we're also expecting, and we will see that you'll have high school students, middle school students, reaching out to their younger peers and mentoring them in programming. So, with that, I think I will turn it back over to Dr. Weisong.
So, Dr. Griffin and Board Members, as you can see, the task force was very deliberate in the planning of this pre-K through 12 sequence in terms of how much could be done in each year, how much change can be successfully implemented at each level each year, how much work can be taken on by the district departments each year. And so, again, this will end up being a major part of our work over the next five school years, but again, we feel confident that we can achieve the timeline. It's aggressive, but certainly. building as a team, as Dr. Weisong and Wilson had mentioned, as a team, as a district, building the digital information technology program for high school students, and also that'll start going down into middle school. I think one of the outcomes that you're going to see with this, as was mentioned, but just to wrap this up, is from the high school perspective, it is interdisciplinary. If you go back to what Mr. Peats said, and you think about all the skills and how you probably could take any one of those skills and push those into a social studies course, and a language arts, math, logically, science, those can go into many different directions. So it is truly interdisciplinary by nature, and we're also expecting, and we will see that you'll have high school students, middle school students, reaching out to their younger peers and mentoring them in programming. So with that, I think I will turn it back over to Dr. Weisong.
So Dr. Griffin and board members, as you can see, the task force was very deliberate in the planning of this pre-K through 12 sequence in terms of how much could be done in each year, how much change can be successfully implemented at each level each year, how much work can be taken on by the district departments each year. And so, again, this will end up being a major part of our work over the next five school years, but again, we feel confident that we can achieve the timeline. It's aggressive, but certainly reachable. The key to this process will be the writing teams, and we're very excited that, based on the proof of concept at kindergarten, with the work that was done last spring, we know that we have the in-house talent to put this together in a way that works for our teachers, our students, our parents. And so, these writing teams that will be composed of teachers and ETFs, administrators, district staff, will really work together to create the instructional plan, and then to make decisions about whether we're going to write a lesson entirely in-house, whether they're going to reach out for external resources, and kind of make those decisions. In terms of a resource discussion, we're really looking at three primary pieces. One is, again, the curriculum writing, certainly compensating those who are working on the project for that writing time, professional development services, that's really to train up all of these teachers and to keep that training going. Certainly even with kindergarten, it was mentioned that we'll do some revision based on year-one feedback, and then not only will there be retraining, but we'll have to train new kindergarten teachers that have been hired. So that training cycle, you know, will continue and get larger each summer and fall. And then finally, we have to consider the equipment and device strategy, which again is going to be driven by the curriculum decisions that are made by the writing teams. So we look forward to further dialogue about that, and again, we're really getting ready to launch those first and third grade writing teams right away, because their work really has to be concluded by June in order to start teacher training this summer. So again, it's an aggressive timeline, but certainly manageable. I just want to make a couple of comments on the value that we expect to be returned to the community for this initiative. The committee spent almost the entirety of the last meeting really talking about return on investment and what we can expect to see. You noticed that in the final year, there will be a pretty significant capstone project in the fifth grade, and we expect to really be able to use that to demonstrate that we've demystified computer science, that students feel that it's accessible to them, that it's valuable to them, that it's impact their other learning in math and science. We can do kind of interim looks along the way, but we think that capstone project will give us a lot of data. We expect to see that this initiative is going to support the efforts that have been underway in this district for the past decade, really, to create acceleration opportunities in math and science, because so many of these skillsets overlap among those disciplines. We will see more students earning digital tool certificates in elementary and middle school as a result of this initiative. And just a reminder, that not only provides the student with a badge or a mini-credential, it also currently, under the current statute, returns some bonus funding to the district, which will then help us kind of invest in the sustainability of the initiative. We should certainly see high school enrollment in computer science increase, both in AP courses and in electives that lead to industry certification. And again, those industry certifications in AP courses translate to college credit and tuition savings for families. So we expect to see, again, a monetized post-secondary benefit to families, as well as bonus funding returning to the district from the state in order to reinvest in these types of initiatives. And finally, although the ultimate goal of this initiative is not necessarily to turn out, again, a generation of coders, we certainly believe that a percentage of students are going to be really excited about computer science and choose this as a post-secondary education and career pathway, which kind of contributes to that regional talent pipeline. And, you know, talking to Seminole State, to UCF, to all of the employers we interact with, demand for these, this type of talent is only going to increase in our community. So we're excited to be able to participate in building that pipeline. So just in closing, thank you to Dr. Griffin, really, for giving us the vision and allowing this team of 30 individuals to work on this plan. We're also very grateful to Mr. Bauer, who is the board member who served on the task force, who provided a lot of insight to us, not only in terms of the business community's perspective, but also as a board member in thinking through some of the processes. So very grateful to him for his service with this initiative. We're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Board member, any questions, Ms. Almond, and then Ms. Schaffner.
The I Challenge pilot and where that was, where that took place?
The Programming and Logic Digital Tool Certificate currently was offered at Rocklake Middle School.
And did they volunteer, or did you select them?
They volunteered to try out the ICT suite, so that's one of the programs that's Digital Tool Certificate and ICT suite.
Did they also have that at Jackson Heights, though? We were there the other day, and they were saying they were sitting for exams to get a certificate.
Jackson Heights is doing a related pilot in GIS systems, so not directly connected to this, but again, kind of an overlap in terms of analysis skills.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schaffner.
Completely support what you're doing, I think it's wonderful. But I'm looking at the teachers that it's going to take to put this in all high schools' AP, knowing how much these high-tech people can make in the private business. Is it going to be a challenge to find teachers that are going to be able to teach this?
I certainly think that, as with a lot of these high-tech programs, we're putting in personnel, recruitment is always going to be a challenge that we're going to have to address, and I think that's the good part about this phase-in, is we have time to start these conversations now with faculty at Seminole State and UCF about helping us to identify students who, although they are computer science majors or have this skillset, may be interested in a career in education, so we can start that dialogue early. I think the other, I think the other opportunity is starting now to talk with teachers who may have an interest in training in this area. Certainly, there's been a lot of effort put into retraining people who don't have a computer science background and teaching them to code. We're hoping to bring in some resources in the near future to give teachers an opportunity who want to learn more about computer science, have access to online resources, and so we may have some personnel who decide they want to go this route and be retrained, and then, you know, we'll work with them on the certification possibilities.
I have a question on the certifications. I'm concerned about sustainability, because we all think this is a wonderful idea, and we want to keep it growing, and what it looks like today probably won't look like what it's even going to look like next year, because everything's changing so rapidly. Are we planning on offering every single certification that's available currently for the additional bonus from the state, or are there still gaps in offerings?
We, actually, my team recently did a full analysis of the entire industry certification funding list, and we're really looking for those opportunities. What are we missing? And we may be missing it because we don't know about it, or it's a new certification. Those lists change annually, so sometimes something new comes on the list and then immediately departs, and so we want to be careful about not investing in that and then seeing it leave the list. I can tell you, for example, that with the new cybersecurity program, we're looking at four potential industry certifications coming out of that program. One of the challenges with that list is sometimes there are certifications there that sound really good, and when you do the deep research on them, there's a work component that, in theory, could be attainable by a high school student, but it's probably one or two students in a unique situation, not a group of 100. And so, we want to approach those students with those opportunities, but it may not be an en masse possibility.
Right.
Whereas the Programming and Logic Digital Tool Certificate we're talking about, we believe that with the work that's being done here, that will end up being attainable by the vast majority of middle school students because of the years-long exposure to computer science. So it'll really be a case-by-case basis, and again, hopefully, the legislature is going to continue to support that initiative, because it's making a difference.
And looking at the high schools specifically, if we have kindergarteners talking about algorithms, my thought is, by the time they're in high school, they're going to need more than two AP computer science courses. Does the state allow us to offer additional AP computer science courses, or would they be dual enrollment courses?
Well, the College Board now has the two AP courses, and so we'll see where that goes. There are a number of information technology, career in tech programs that we could offer. It's just a matter of where student interest takes us, right? And so, you know, one outcome that I personally hope is that we're going to see more students interested in database essentials, which right now, sounds like a pretty intimidating and maybe at first glance, not a very exciting program, but actually, there's a lot you can do with that. You just have to get past the intimidation part, and I think that this early exposure will help us do that. So it'll be interesting to see how quickly this sparks interest in other types of programs so that we have enough interest to go ahead and offer it.
Great. Anything else, board members?
Well, thank you, team, for all your hard work. This is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Griffin, do you have any recommendations on student discipline?
I do. That's the School Board of Seminole County approved the student discipline recommendations from November 30th, 2015.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, motion carries. Before we get into the board member comments, I thought it might be good for us to have some comments for staff about some recent good news that we received. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask Dr. Cummins and Dr. Blazewitz to come up and spend a minute to share some great data that we received within the past week on graduation rates and pre-K readiness. So we're going to begin with the end in mind, so we'll start with pre-K and then go to senior year of high school. Okay, got it.
Well, board members, first I'd like to ask Dr. Annalyn Jones to stand. She is director of VPK, and of course, Marge Murray, who worked with VPK last year, as I share this information. As you know, we received the preliminary readiness rates for the 2014-2015 school year, and these rates really measure how well the VPK providers prepare students to be ready for kindergarten. During the 2014-15 school year, there were 551 students at 31 VPK sites that were included in the readiness rate. As kindergarteners this year, they participated in the Florida Kindergarten Readiness Screeners, where we complete the work samples portion of the Flicters Assessment within the first 30 days of school. That subtest is used to determine readiness rates, and in order to be included in those rates, students must have completed at least 70% or more of the VPK program. The minimum score that indicates readiness was a 70. So of our 31 sites, one of our sites scored in the 80s, seven scored between 90 and 99, and 23 scored a perfect 100. All five of our most at-risk sites scored 100% in readiness. These students were able to attend a full-day program at no charge to the parents. So again, I'd like to thank Dr. Annalyn Jones, Marge Murray, and Carla Betts, who work very closely with the VPK program.
Great, thank you. And because you did such a great job, I'm assuming these pre-Ks did okay in their senior year in high school, too?
Good news.
Good.
Graduation rates, now remember, we're talking about last year's graduating class, so this would be the graduating class of 2015, so for the 2014-15 school year. As you know, graduation rate is the first goal mentioned in our strategic plan, and it is definitely a pre-K through 12 initiative to improve our graduation rate, and once again, we've done so. This year, as a district, we improved from 85.1 to 86.42%, which, to put things in perspective for you, that's number one in central Florida, highest graduating, graduation rate in central Florida, and number one among the 17 largest school districts. So we're very proud of our progress. We're one of the highest-performing districts in the nation as it relates to graduation rate. If you dig into the details of the graduation rates, you'll also notice that unlike many school districts around the nation, our subgroup populations are also graduating at a very high rate. Our schools of the nine high schools, eight of them improved, and the only one that didn't improve still finished even above our graduation rate, and four of the nine finished with a graduation rate of 90% or above.
Wow. Fantastic, congratulations. And we know it's because of a lot of hard work with our great teachers, hard-working students, and supportive community. Any other questions or comments, board members? Great. Moving on to board member committee comments. Since our last meeting, have you represented us on any committees? Member Schaffner.
Yes, over the holidays, of course, we didn't have a lot of things going on, but today, we had a joint work session with the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools, and I think it was very informative. I think the fact that we are meeting with them, so they are tying their goals to our goals, is very, very important, and I think that was pretty obvious today.
Great. Member Bauer.
No comments, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart.
The Insurance Committee met last night. It was a great meeting, and I know it seems like I always act surprised when I say, "Oh, it was a great meeting," but it really, last night, I think really was a turning point for the group, working together as a team. There are a couple of members here tonight from the Insurance Committee, and I think it was, it was probably the first time we met that we actually discussed something and made two decisions at the same meeting. That may sound like, "So what?" But let me tell you, that is a huge accomplishment. It was great. Really excited about the inclusion of some educational pieces during each of the meetings. Andrea Herr is going to bring at least one topic to us that will help us to put pieces of the puzzle together, to learn about something further in advance of the item that we'll have to be making a decision on, to make a recommendation, so that we won't be learning on the fly and then being expected to make a recommendation right at that moment. So I think that's going to really help a lot. It was just a great meeting. Everybody contributed, everybody gave their perspective. Not everybody had the same perspective, but it was still obvious that everyone listened and heard where other people were coming from, and I think there are going to be some really good, well-thought-out recommendations coming to the superintendent, which ultimately is what that group really has, has been trying to strive for for so long, is to make sure that they're giving really good, solid recommendations, so that the superintendent feels like things have been really well-vetted and thought through. So it was a great meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mrs. Almond.
The Business Advisory Board met last week, and the presentation was made by Mr. Rinaldi and Ms. Olson. They went over the RFQ purchasing procedures, and they said how they've been streamlined and clearly communicated to the vendors, so they have a better handle on how to proceed when they have an interest in doing business with us. We talked a little bit about surplus vendors and anything related to that. And last month, Seminole Prevention Coalition discussed human trafficking. And that's my report.
Thank you. And Monday, I represented the board at the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, and the guest speaker for that meeting was from the STEM Alliance, and the good news is, is he shared that the businesses have raised the money to double the investment that they're going to be putting into our schools. Their passion is mainly around the robotics and many of the high-tech areas, but they were excited to hear that the School Boards Coalition grew by three more districts, so they were going to be meeting one-on-one with those three new districts to see if they would like to join the Alliance as well, because they felt that would allow them to raise more money from the corporations that are already partnerships with them, knowing that they'd have a larger reach and to more populations. So it was very, I thought, very positive. I know, Dr. Griffin, you were there as well, and I think they want to listen to the schools to see what we want. They don't want to come as businesses, knowing what they need in the workforce, but they want to work collaboratively with the school districts, and I know Seminole County is very active in working with them, and I think the future looks bright, you know, going forward. And yesterday, wasn't that I represented the board, but CEDIN met, which is the Seminole, I know, Ms. Almond, you were there as well, and I think it's very powerful for Dr. Weisong to attend each time, and I know I learned something. They always pick, it's the Seminole Education...
Seminole Economic Development Education Network.
Education Network. And so, the Seminole County Government invites usually three to four businesses of a like business each meeting to talk about what are their workforce needs, what can we as educational entities do with our students to provide them with good workers, and how can we partner collaboratively? And this time, it was interesting, it was construction. And obviously, Wharton Smith was there, and they were very complimentary about the interns that we send them over. And it's always just good to hear different perspectives, and I think it comes right back down to what we know we're doing in the classrooms every single day. They want an employee to have the... They want an employee to have the basic skills of reading and writing, whether you're going to be the electrician, or whether you're going to be the office manager, or whether you're going to be the project manager. But they said they don't always need to hire the 4.5 GPA if all you've done is sit in the classroom. They'd much rather look at a 3.0 GPA if you've gone out and had a summer job, or if you've done an internship, or if you work collaboratively with groups and a team. And so it's just, it's good to reaffirm that, from a curriculum standpoint, we know we're doing the right thing to help our business community. At this point in time, we're moving to our public comments. Part of our agenda is, anybody wish to make a public comment? If so, bring your form to our clerk. Okay, seeing none. Dr. Griffin, do we have any unfinished business or new business?
Not at this time. A few items on my superintendent's report. Item A is our 2016-17 student transfer options, and this is really our first go at setting up our transfer options for the 16-17 school year. It will look a lot like this, but it will be modified, as you're all aware, as we look at our actual roll-up numbers and the impact of Magnus and so on. But it includes our diversity transfers, our capacity transfers, those with transportation, those without transportation, and so on. And then the second information item is just a transition plan of the FIT Fund to the Marie Taylor Family in Need Fund. And third is just a recap of the 2015 TEGEN.
Board members, do you have any comments on any of those three items?
I only have one thing to say about the transfer options. I don't know who does this, but it's pretty incredible, because it's like, if you move something in here, something has to go out here, and it's like, I think I likened it to the slide game that, you know, you used to play with the numbers, and you had to get them all aligned, and my eyes have gone blurry several times trying to follow this. If, you know, from here to there, and then... It's just really incredible, and I think anyone that questions whether or not Seminole County is a choice district, and, Dr. Griffin, I know you'll have the opportunity to speak about that tomorrow in Tallahassee, and I hope you'll share about that before we close up tonight. This, I don't know any other district that has anything comparable to what we're offering our families in terms of choice, so kudos to you all for the work that it takes to put this together. It's incredible.
Ms. Lockhart, I want to give a special shout-out to Kyle Hughes. He does a lot of that work, working with the team, but we've asked him, time and time again, to tweak the format and bring us different information. But I think the format that we have now and the direction that we're moving with choices, as far as transparency and information for parents, is the right direction and the one that you all requested.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, even as an add-on to what you said, those are only brick-and-mortar options.
Right.
I think once you add on to that the e-pathways options of going to another high school at night to take an automotive or an art class, or taking part of your day virtually and part of the day in the school, I really, again, have to compliment the staff for being as creative and student-focused and centered on what's right and best for all.
I think the complaint I hear most about this is, there's too many options. I just can't decide, so that's a nice problem to have.
Yeah.
Yep, great work. My only comment and question was, in our FIT Fund and our Families in Need Fund, I know we only have one chance to take that first step to announce a new initiative, and I know this was the communication plan, and I think we've really branded well FIT, people just say FIT, and they know what it stands for. A lot of terms and education jargon, since we have so many, not everybody understands what they are. And so I applaud going to the FIN, because you're keeping some of it close, and I love Marie Taylor. I just don't know if that should be the head of the name or the secondary of the name, if you understand where I'm coming from, because I think it's hard to come out with the name Marie Taylor if people don't know how wonderful she was. You know, we, within the district, know who she is, but for sustainability portions, I'm almost wondering, and I know, Ms. Schaffner, you remember the days when we were, you know, financially responsible for those funds, that if we keep it maybe under the headline of Families in Need and have the sub-account of the Marie Taylor Fund, because I think those of us who donate to the Marie Taylor Fund every year are passionate about that, but might not know the differences in both, knowing that they'll both be melded together, but I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, I agree. I think it needs to be Families in Need, because I think anybody looking to donate, or somebody even looking for help, might be looking for Families in Need. But they did tell me when I met with them, Michelle, that they would do, on the website, underneath, they would have a blurb about Marie Taylor, in fact, she was the first social worker in the district, da-da-da, so that part of it is still captured, but I think the actual title needs to be Families in Need.
Okay, I guess it was just confusing when I saw the title in the board packet, to change it to Marie Taylor.
We can do the FIN, FIT to FIN, because we were guided with our communication plan through Davia and Michael Lawrence, our Communication Officer. One of the suggestions was to make it FIT to FIN. The other thing was that we could still write the story about Marie Taylor, but that will be the sub-part when you open up a Facebook, or we do any kind of conversation or collaboration with other groups, we'll make sure to include that.
Great. I think it's really valuable, and it's funny, I thought about this conversation today during our work session with the Foundation, because if you notice, there were several funds that were mentioned, or trusts that donate to the Foundation, and it was, and now I'm not going to be able to remember which ones they were, but blah, 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 a John Smith Fund, or blah, blah, blah. And I thought, so it immediately came, oh, that's exactly... Obviously, it works that way very well for people, and I think it's important to keep Marie Taylor as a part of the story, because I think so much of what FIT has done and what FIN will do has really already been done for so many years by...
Without a title.
Without a title, by the Marie Taylors of the world. And so to continue to keep that and honor that, I think is really important, but I think I agree completely that Families in Need needs to be the primary header.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh. We appreciate it. Moving on to board member comments. Member Schaffner?
Just today's work session, I thought, was very valuable. We get to have more conversation and discussion at these work sessions, and so I just, that was just a comment I wanted to make.
Great, thank you. Member Bauer?
Yes, just real quickly, I wanted to apologize for missing some of the holiday celebrations. Unfortunately, I hurt my back. I'm telling everybody, I hurt my back rock climbing, but in actuality, it was getting out of bed the day after Christmas. So I apologize for missing all the holiday celebrations, and I hope to be back with you soon.
We miss you. Get well soon. Vice Chairman Lockhart?
Two things that I'd like to share. One is, I want to publicly thank Dr. Griffin and whoever else was responsible for bringing Will Richardson to us last week. For those of you who don't know, and maybe any parents who might be wondering, Will Richardson is a somewhat well-known in many education circles, former English literature teacher, principal for 22 years, who is now doing quite a bit of pot-stirring, I guess. He's really challenging what we've come to consider as educational norms and having some very meaningful conversations with people. So you can, you should YouTube him, or look up his TED Talks, Will Richardson. I shared one of them on my Facebook page not long ago, and a parent said, "We would really like to know when you all are doing things like this, because as parents, we want to partner with the school district, and for us to know that you're bringing in someone like this, and this is something you're exploring, we want to be able to learn about it and partner with you." And it was just a kind of an eye-opener for me, that, you know, we get in our little bubble here in the school district, and we forget that we have a lot of support out there, with parents especially, who I think would really latch on to Will's message and could be incredibly helpful, so...
Yeah, I think would help us, really, moving forward. I do want to give special thanks to Beth Poses. She was passionate about Will Cummins. She's been talking about him for a couple of years. She organized really just about everything the entire two days, and Dr. Harper had seen him before, so he exceeded our expectations. I thought he was great.
He was fantastic, so thank you very much for that. Also wanted to thank both the Sheriff's Office and Seminole State College. On a personal note, I have a soon-to-be driver in my house, and they, the Sheriff's Office sponsored something called the Teen Driver Challenge. They don't offer it all the time, and they even told me I couldn't really advertise it because they don't know when they're going to offer it again, and so they don't really want people banging on their doors. But apparently, when they do offer it, they'll send out information to all of our high schools. So if you have a high schooler, or a rising high schooler, or if we find out through secondary ed that they're going to be offering it again, I would highly recommend it's... They took class time of four hours on Friday night and spent all day from 8:00 to 5:00 on the driving range out at Geneva, out by the landfill. So the Sheriff's Office had the students out there in cars on this track, driving, putting them in situations that they might encounter, driving, which my child enjoyed, apparently, at high rates of speed, and then having to slam on their brakes and avoid an object. And we sent him with the car we cared least about, but it was really great for them to not just be in a classroom environment, and there was no one sitting in the car with them, they were on their own.
Wow.
Yeah, it was really a phenomenal experience. So lower the deductible on your auto insurance, and then send your child to the Teen Driving Challenge at the Sheriff's Office. And so many of our students participated in that, that the Sheriff's Office does that on their own as a benefit to our community, no charge, it was free. So thank you to them very much for being such a great partner.
Well, if he needs any more, know that we offer free driver's ed in our high schools as well, and my children did it through our schools, and it's the big difference, though, there is an adult in those cars, and the cars aren't yours, they're ours, so that'll make you sleep a little bit better, in case you were worried about the safety measure.
It was great.
Good.
So thank you to the Sheriff, and thank you to Seminole State.
Great. Anything else? Oh, okay. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Sertoma, who is always an organization... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Almond. Ms. Almond?
Thank you. Today, I went with Dr. Griffin and Mr. Kelly to Sterling Park Elementary, and they did principal access if we wanted to go in and watch them do the morning announcements, so we did. And there must have been half, a dozen, 15 kids in there, but one student really caught our attention, and at the end of it, we learned that he was blind, and he participated fully in everything but the on-camera reading from the teleprompter, but he had a prompter who sat by his side and would encourage him if he didn't remember all of the words and his lines. And since he's been doing this TV crew, he's become very popular on the campus, and kids now go out of their way to say hello to him. We also learned that later, he expected you to then applaud for him. So he would come in and stand there, and he'd remind them if they didn't, and they brought him in to us, and we all had to applaud for him, too, and then he was done, and he left the room. It was awesome. And I'm not sure when this was, a couple of weeks back, Lair Elementary had a STEAM team showcase, and one of the things that they were, the kids were showing was called Claymation, and I'd never seen anything like that, and I was so impressed. So the children make clay figurines, and then they take snapshot pictures, and they just keep moving it and bending it, making little movies, and they were having an absolute ball. They were very creative. Even the autistic kids were very much involved in it. They seemed to almost have a voice there on the screen, if you will, and it was very impressive, very well done. So kudos to both of those schools, and that's what I have.
Great, thank you. As I said, Sertoma is a great support, doing our Super Students each month, supporting so many things that we do in the schools. They had their big charity golf tournament that they raise all their funds for the year at, and so they were very thankful for our participation. I also had the opportunity to sit on my computer for the day to watch the last Board of Education meeting, when they set the cut scores, and it was interesting to see that when I attended the prior board meeting, and you were there as well, Ms. Lockhart, when they were in Orlando, we really didn't know where the votes were going to go, but the most impressive thing that I saw were a few of those board members were contacted by their local school board representatives to walk through some of their schools, and they wanted to actually show them some things that they were doing, and their votes actually changed of how they were going to do the cut scores. So lest us not think that our constant communication about what we know is right of the Sunshine Solution, we need to continue saying it, and to all that will listen, because it's the right thing to do for the state of Florida. I have to thank you, Dr. Griffin, for going up to Tallahassee and advance tomorrow to continuing, and I know all of us will be going up in the next few weeks, but I think we have to continue to engage in the conversation and to work collaboratively to make sure we do what's right for kids in the state of Florida, or it's, could potentially be a train wreck. And many of us went to Lake Mary High School last week as well, and I was so excited to see not only the technology engagement, but mixed learning. We were, you know, wondering, how do you do that blended learning model? And I thought we saw some very good examples of that, 100% student engagement, even the day after Christmas break. It was like, no one missed a beat, whether it was the first day of the class for the one semester classes, or whether it was the first day of the second semester of the class. I was very impressed, so kudos to Lake Mary High. And if any of you are available tomorrow, as you know, Google will be coming to Greenwood Lakes Middle School, but I had the opportunity last week to visit when they were at Parton, wasn't it, Parton? And word of advice, sit when you're looking through the Google 3D glasses, but it's, the virtual reality is where we're going, and I highly recommend attending any of those sessions.
But that's all week, isn't it?
Friday.
And Friday, yeah.
Friday.
Down for Friday.
Yeah.
There's a schedule...
That was emailed out a bit ago. Parton, they were only there for one day, because they only do it with the older children, but the interesting thing is, you know, because technology changes by the minute, so you don't want to invest millions of dollars in something that's already going to be archaic, but the actual containers themselves that hold the device, you can get $3 at Amazon. So these are some good potential ways to bring in different types of learning experiences, and the aha moment I had was, Google came in early to actually do the professional development for the teachers before, and it just solidified in my mind, we saw it when we visited Apple, that it's not the device, it's the teacher, and it's, the teacher needs the support and the training on that, so they know how to infuse it within the classroom. So I was very, very impressed. The teachers at Parton did a great job, and I'm sure they will, too, at Greenwood Lakes. Dr. Griffin, do you have anything else?
Yeah, board members, I'll be at Greenwood at 9:45 on Friday, and I think the media's going to join us there. Mr. Lawrence is working on that, so if you are available to join me, that'd be great. And a few board members mentioned about tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'll be addressing the Senate Appropriations Committee, specifically about districts of choice, and really going up there explaining why we offer choice, and we do it for the right reasons, and certainly, all of the choice that we do offer. And you know what, I'm going to be, I'm so publicly proud to say that you've offered choice for a long time, and you do so with transportation, and you do it for the right reasons. Some districts offer choice, but they don't transport the students there, and that's probably the number-one equity factor. When you look at any district that's struggling with equity issues, it's about transportation. So tomorrow, there are three or four superintendents, CIOs, and of course, I'll have Ally there with me, as far as she's allowed to go, and we'll see how that goes. But Julie France is going to prep us, I think, from 1:00 to 3:00, and then I think the committee meeting is 4:00 to 6:00. So it should be interesting.
Will you be on the Sunshine Network?
I don't know. I'm not sure how they're going to do it.
Or the Sunshine Channel, or the Sun, whatever?
Yes.
If I find something out, I'll text it to you.
Great. Anything else for the good of the Order, board members? Seeing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.